And we have two cases that we're dealing with tonight. First one is case number 0320, 55 SSLC. And this is for 51, 53, 55 Summer Street. It's a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B. We've continued this hearing a number of times during the COVID pandemic, and we're moving forward at it this time. This is John Lee, I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. Tonight, we have with us Drew Delaney, Suzanne Murphy. We also have online with us Bob Fitzgerald and Jane Coffey. And we also have our new member for the zoning board of appeals, Dave Andrews.
Anderson.
Anderson, Dave Anderson. We also have online with us Amy Messier, Board Secretary, Ashley Clark, Director of Community Development, Julie Barrett, 40B Consultant, Amy Quessell, Town Council, Cliff Bommer, Design Peer Reviewer, and Sean Riordan, Engineer Peer Reviewer. In an effort to move the review of the proposal forward, the ZBA is attempting a hybrid hearing where the board members are at Town Hall and the applicant and public can participate remotely. It should be noted that the board is conducting the hearings in a manner that is consistent with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Executive Order concerning the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. And under this order, the board may defer review as needed without facing constructive grant for approval. We have identified narrow topics to discuss this evening and will determine on a topic-by-topic basis what is acceptable to try to review remotely and what should be deferred. It should also be noted that the board must have a narrow scope for agendas to accommodate the virtual format. Please note that this hearing is not, is being recorded and information on how to access the Zoom hearing is available on the ZBA Agenda on the Town page. Be advised that this hearing is, and that some attendees may be participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you if anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Order of tonight's hearing. First, we will hear from the board's Design Peer Reviewer, followed by the board's Engineer Peer Reviewer. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the reviewers. The applicant will be given an opportunity to respond to what the reviewers or the board has said and should limit their comments to material discussions at this hearing. We will take public comments for 30 minutes. After the 30 minutes, the board will continue the hearing to a date certain where the agenda items will be public comment related to the peer review in topics of design and engineering. For public comment component of the hearing, I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by name and address only in the chat box or by raising the hand feature. The chat icon is located at the bottom of your screen. Please click on this icon and the chat window will appear. To the right or select icon that looks like a hand to raise your hand to indicate that you would like to speak. Our Community Development Director, Ashley Clark, will queue members in orders in which they are received and will call on you to speak one at a time. Please limit your comments to three minutes and please focus on the topics that we have been discussing this evening. Additionally, those watching from home, strongly encourage to email your comments to zba@wallpole-ma.gov or mail them to the Town Hall. If there's any questions from zoning board members at this time, do we have two other members on remote? Okay, I see on the screen, I see Jane and Bob is there? Okay. I was asking, turned my camera off.
Oh, yeah, nice.
Okay.
I don't need to touch.
And at this point, if there's no questions or procedural questions, we're going to turn it over to Cliff, who did the peer review. So, Ashley, will you let Cliff in and we will proceed?
That doesn't.
Okay, Cliff, we're ready whenever you are.
I can hear you too.
Thank you. Yeah, everything else went silent on me. So I'm not sure.
So it sounds like everyone else's volume is audible. I wonder if, Drew, could you unmute yourself and try to say something and see how your audio sounds?
We can hear you. As well, we can hear Cliff.
I'm here.
Ashley, my audio is fine too?
Yep, I can hear you well. John was really garbled. And I got about 15 texts from people telling me so.
Okay, I turned off my video. And we're ready to go with Cliff's comments.
You ready? Oh, it sounds like people need to mute if they're not talking. At least I'm hearing. Okay, now I don't hear echoes anymore. So are we, we good then?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, I'm Cliff Bommer. I'm an architect at Davis Square Architects in Somerville. We specialize in multifamily housing and we do a tremendous amount of affordable housing developments as well, including numerous 40B developments. I personally, as the president of Davis Square Architects, do a lot of 40B reviews in addition to our practice of designing multifamily developments. So I think the, I presume everyone has seen the memo that I sent that stated August 13th, which summarizes kind of my main points. I'm under contract with you folks as ZBA for doing a broad, a broad review that goes beyond the comments that are in this, in this memo. But I thought it was probably most helpful to try to really focus in on the things that I saw as what I would call, sorry, turn off my phone too. Things that I saw as kind of fundamental issues. I think that the big picture for me is easily seen in the, in the master plan for the site that was submitted. And I don't know if Ashley, Ashley's on, I know, but I don't see her anymore. But I think she has the ability to show some images. If not, it may be, it's not dead critical because you probably all have the drawings in front of you too. But for me, what struck me as unusual was, given the site plan, was the amount of space. Knowing that there are many constraints of the, of the wetlands, what I found ill proportioned, I suppose is the fairest way to put it, is a tremendous amount of space that was allocated for the smaller, single-family home parts of the development. And then by the time the, I'm not sure about sequencing, but comparatively, the amount of space on the site that was really dedicated to the benefit of the multifamily buildings, which are of course a much, much larger scale and denser, there was a real disproportion just from a 30,000 square foot view at the site. And to me, that's a very important part when, when the large buildings are used as a means of, are organized around a kind of courtyard, one has to think about whether that space is really sufficient and appropriate for that many units. So from a big, big picture perspective, I think that is the overarching issue. For me, I think there are other associated site issues that have to do with kind of a lack of consolidation of additional open space on the site. All of the single-family homes are very evenly spaced with not a lot of space between them in particular, which means that it's probably not very programmable or usable. So you end up dedicating a lot of open space to the space that really doesn't, doesn't benefit the development at large or even whether you're speaking so of the single-family homes or the, or the multifamily. So the kind of detail that I went into in that memo was really mainly about site plans. And my normal method for reviewing 40B developments is kind of look at the site at large as the number one driving issue. And, and the reason is, is that the 40B developments, once, I think kind of my philosophy is that when you find a good 40B site, that you should think carefully about a responsible way to put as many units as are really work and can actually benefit the community. So to that end, I think that what happened on this site plan was there was, it is a large development, as you know. But I think what happened on this plan was there was a very conventional approach taken to laying out single-family homes and not a lot of thought put into the layout of the multifamily buildings. I think where it kind of comes out in the wash is that there was a clear intent from the site plan that with the exception of the five homes that are sighted right at the building entry off of Summer Street, I think the philosophy was probably that the developer really didn't want the public at large to even be aware of the development. And I think there, you could make an argument that in most respects, you, you wouldn't from an architectural perspective. There are other impacts that are environmental, traffic, et cetera, that would be felt by the public outside of the development. But overall, the plan is organized in a way, and specifically to push the big four-story buildings to the back of the site to minimize their impact to the public realm. And if that's the attitude and if that can be pulled off successfully, I think there are many people that see that as advantageous. On the other hand, it doesn't really relieve you, the designer of the responsibility of making the, the experience of the building, of the development's residents as well as visitors to the development, it doesn't relieve you of responsibility to design it in a way that is truly a pleasant place to live, which is of course the, the best way to achieve long-term sustainability is to create an environment where people really want to be and take care of and care about and call their home. So I think that, I don't necessarily feel like you want me to go through that entire memo, but I think the basics are that I, there was no organizing. Again, the single-family home approach is somewhat conventional. Is make a certain size, single-family home lot and, and plant a single-family home in the middle of each one. Not, not earth-shattering in any way. And I think there are many ways to make that work, even if it's as regular as this is, kind of a cookie cutter as this one is. But the real issue is with the bigger buildings, there's no real organizing element in the plan that was submitted. It really looks like whatever space was left over at that end of the site, the buildings got put there without a lot of thinking about the experience for the people who live in those homes. So while maybe it scores higher on pushing the most impactful buildings further away from the public realm, I think it, it does a poor job of creating an environment where people would really thrive. And there are lots of detailed comments, even in that memo. I think that vehicular circulation that's labeled as, as lanes or roads or just connected parking lots. I think all of us have walked in parking lots enough to know that's not really a road. I think it's a big enough site that I think you could argue that if you make it really pedestrian-friendly, it really could be a very nice destination. I think if it's laid out with more attention paid to the quality of the streets and pedestrian paths, I could see people really enjoying the connection with the environment and being able to get out and walk around and socialize and create connections within the community. This is really of a scale that it is its own neighborhood. So my, my suggestion, which I think you can read from here is through this, is to think, to pull back a little bit, rethink the site plan in a way that you acknowledge it is a development that's big enough to be called a neighborhood and use a lot of very traditional strategies for, for creating neighborhoods. The sketch that, I guess Ashley put this up. When I looked again, as I said, I was most struck by the lack of an organizing element in the site plan and certainly access of all the large rental buildings to true, open space, usable open space of sufficient scale. So this plan that was really just a sketch, I'm not the architect for the project, was an idea of how to create a large, open space that could be the organizing element, reorient the buildings so more of the units actually do have nice views out into the wet, mainly wetlands, but otherwise open space, creating streets that are really walkable, varying the types of parking that are available in the proposed plan. I think you see most of the, virtually all the parking is 90-degree parking aimed directly at the buildings, which creates a lot of issues of headlight intrusion in the building and certainly not a very pleasant place to walk. There also wasn't a lot of space. There isn't, in the proposal, there isn't a lot of space between the walkways and the building units. So I would imagine that a lot of residents would, even though they're in a potentially very nice setting, would have their blinds closed all the time and not really take advantage of being in a nice place. So without, I think the building design, again, for me, it's more important to get the, the big issues of where, where the density is. Is it a walkable, scaled environment that's properly scaled for the size of the buildings? It has a lot to do with the setback of the buildings from the streets and the walkways. But for me, that's what needs the most intense review. The buildings themselves, as drawn, are, I have some issues with them, but I didn't feel it was really appropriate to dig too deeply in that. Generally speaking, for buildings of this scale, I would recommend more articulation in the buildings, both in the overall footprint of the building, but also in the detail of the building. While this is, I don't think you could make a strong argument that these buildings in any way could or should relate to the local context, which of course is of a much smaller scale and really has no, certainly no visible connection across. I think that's kind of taken for granted. But if you need to cite four-story buildings on roadways, there are some pretty well-established design principles that ensure that the building scale isn't overwhelming and create an environment that really isn't that pleasant to walk around in. So I think that's kind of my main issue. There are other points that I think, and I know the civil reviewer has some issues about circulation within the site. I think from my perspective, to the greatest degree you can create circulation throughout the development is probably a plus. I think even in the, in the small scale, I've said very little about single-family, but I think if you imagine walking down the roads where those single-family homes are, there are, there are a lot of curb cuts. The curb cuts are, are not great for pedestrians. I think there are ways to consolidate, you know, potentially join garage to garage or think about strategies for consolidating open space. I think also think about view corridors that could be opened up if you did consolidate some of the green space. You might open up view corridors along the walkway so that you could always have a nice view into the wetlands. But overall, I think a kind of a more overall acceptance that you have a site that has great potential for a connection with a very interesting landscape. And I think there has to be some kind of, of, at least it's my recommendation that the developer look more closely at. If you're doing a development that really is kind of a destination and you want people to be happy they're there, the reason I think they would want to be there is because of the potential of relating to a more natural setting. So I think that's about it. I have some very specific suggestions. I would say overall, it's kind of not fair for zoning boards to try to evaluate something of this scale unless they're, they're really experienced doing it. And you're looking at just two-dimensional plans and some of the, and then interspersed with three-dimensional views of buildings. In my opinion, you would, I think that my recommendation is that you do get a full site-wide sketch-up model or perhaps rev it, I'm not sure which three-dimensional software they're using, but they are using a three-dimensional software for the buildings. My recommendation would be to ask the developer to provide a, a site model so that you really, really could walk through this development and understand from your own perspective whether you think it works or not. So I think I'm open for questions or if you want to go to Sean next, that's fine, whichever way you want to do it.
Do you guys have questions? Zoning board members, do you have any questions? So I do have one question. You talked about as many units that can work. What do you recommend to create long-term sustainability? And that's words you used earlier.
Well, that's a good question. You mean specifically number of units that I think could fit on this site?
Yes, because a lot's going to come down to density.
Yeah, well, and not to beg the question, I'm really not trying to beg the question. I, I don't know the answer to it. When, at its current layout, it is definitely, in my opinion, it's really not working, particularly in the multifamily end of the development. It's, it is too dense. Whether or not you could develop a site plan that, that could really handle the level of density that they're proposing, that's a design issue. And the way that design always goes is it's iterative. So you need to think it, you know, try it out and then look at it and see if it's fulfilling enough of kind of basic criteria for quality of design. So I guess, again, I'm not begging the issue, but usually for me, I don't have a good number for density. A lot of the, the ways that that gets determined are really outside of my expertise. You know, for example, traffic. I mean, sometimes just too much traffic is an argument to diminish density. I really, I'm not qualified to opine on that. So for me, I would need, I would need to see a much more convincing argument, you know, from a design perspective before I would believe that the proposed density is appropriate. So maybe that's the way I would answer it. It's, it's not working now and part of the problem is density. But it doesn't say to me that it wouldn't be possible to achieve a similar density if the design were improved.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Cliff, on, on that. Next, we've got, Bob, did you want to say something? Did you have a comment?
A question, so I can get a little more concrete understanding, I think. You know, obviously, density is one of the things that 40B is sort of geared toward in that it's, the intention is to build affordable housing that, you know, at a density that might not otherwise be allowed under the zoning. So I'm trying to understand when you say that the design doesn't work. And I know that you described, for example, perhaps maximizing open space or having a more organized, organizing principle to development of the site. Do you think that those types of things can be achieved given the density that's proposed? Or are you saying that either some different arrangement of the proposed number of units would, from a design perspective, be more beneficial to the residents and to the surrounding neighborhoods?
Well, please re-ask if I'm, if I, if I'm answering the wrong question or if I heard, heard it wrong. But that, kind of the point of that sketch that I did was to just test myself to see if I thought it was possible to achieve a similar density and satisfy some of the deficiencies that, that I see in the proposed plan. So the plan that, that sketch that, that I drew, I think is very close to the same density. Having said that, it was, you know, it's a very quick sketch. And I would subject that also to the same requirement, I think, or request that it be modeled and studied in a three-dimensional model. So in Sean is, your civil reviewer can probably speak to whether he thinks that, that sketch I did is feasible or not because I, I did approach it with, with the intent of, of a similar density, if not identical, similar density, but organizing the buildings in a way to, to create more of a community feeling within the development.
Thank you, thanks. I think, I just had, I just wanted to say, I think the recommendation to get some sort of three-dimensional model would really help the board to visualize both the scale and the buildings in relation to one another and how they're, you know, proposed to be dispersed around the site. So thanks.
Bob, if I could add, this is Sean Riordan. I'll be speaking in a minute, but to Cliff's point, you know, it's not always just density in terms of a unit count mix because I have no doubt. because I have no doubt that they could get 300 units and address all our space requirements, but it would mean more dense, more dense buildings, because it's really the number of units and how much stress they put on the space that they have available that really creates the issues, not necessarily the number of units.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Sean now. Okay, Sean, you already started, you let in, and that's fine. If you would, do you want to make your comments on your peer review for the civil engineering in sight? Thank you.
My name's Sean Riordan, I'm a vice president with Tetra Tech. We're a local engineering firm based out of Marlboro, Mass. We're part of a larger national, international company, but we've been in Massachusetts for the last thirty-some odd years. I've personally been doing land development, permitting, and engineering design for my thirty-year career, a mixture of both as an applicant, as an applicant's engineer and as a review engineer. So about 25% of our work is review work, about 75% of our work is for actually the applicant side of things. We were hired to look at sort of the more technical issues, the engineering type issues. My first read of the drawings is, as you can imagine, we see all sorts of work products in review jobs. The work that the applicant has submitted is very well-done, very professional, very easy to read, which really helps us a lot in getting down to the real issue. So just want to make sure everybody understands that the work that has been done is quality work done by talented people, so professionalism is there. That being said, to Cliff's point, our prime takeaway was that really, there's not a lot of space left on the site for anything. They've used every square inch to put every conceivable unit that they could. They, you know, they were very creative and they did it in an intuitive way, but what it did is it just leaves very little space for some of the softer things that usually end up making a project successful as opposed to not as successful. What I'll probably do is just go through a few of those things. Now, I've also issued a letter that lists out all our comments. Some of them are super-technical, some of them are more general, but it does give the, sort of, the background on each of the issues a little bit more thorough than I think is appropriate tonight. But, you know, again, the main takeaway was that just everywhere we looked, it seemed like the site was tight, whether it was from a circulation standpoint, whether it was from snow storage, whether it was from usable open space. It just seemed like every square inch was used up, which, you know, which is fine if everything is right. But at this point, where you're early on in the stage, the tendency is for as things get more developed, issues pop up. If you don't have any space to address them, then you end up having sort of this cascade of problems. So what we usually like to see is a sort of a more measured use of the site and not so much stress at every corner, at every lot line. So what I'd like to do is just maybe just go through the high points of our memo, and it was broken down in sort of subject areas. The first was the site plans. These are just our general comments on kind of how the site's organized. Again, very professionally done, all the work was really readable and easy to understand. One of the real big issues for us is, the whole side of the site is adjacent to the commuter rail, so, you know, there has to be sort of a heightened level of concern for anything that goes along on that edge. I was a, you know, trouble-making kid one time, and I, you know, that's the first place I'm going to go if I'm trying to get away from the things that are going on in the neighborhood. I'm going to go to someplace where I shouldn't be. So, you know, we can say it's safe, there's a couple of things that I'm concerned about is there's breaks in the fence through the wetlands and things like that, that certainly kids are going to get around, but I think we just need to always be aware of that sort of safety risk that's there, and we've got to make sure it's being treated appropriately. The other thing is, site's a big site, 300 units in that realm, and only one means of access. So there's only one way in and out of the project. If it's a 10-unit subdivision or maybe even a 15-unit subdivision, not a big deal, but in this case, we've got one means of access for all 300 units, and that access is right by a railroad crossing. So, you know, it's, and it's right down the street from an intersection that's pretty wonky. It's got a history of issues with Gillette Stadium, so a little heightened sensitivity to this particular case where, you know, in some cases, if you're in the middle of nowhere and you only have one access, that's maybe more manageable, but I think in this case, we've got a big site, one means of access, and, you know, it's in an area that's not unconstrained. One thing I did notice too, in looking at the site plans, it's kind of a little tight in some areas for the fire trucks to get in and out of, so we'll want to make sure that every unit is accessible by the wall pull's apparatus, make sure that they can get in and the fire chief can get in and get out without any trouble. One other thing is, again, this goes back to just the tightness of the site, very little area for snow storage. So if you can imagine, all these streets need to be plowed, all these driveways need to be shoveled, all these parking lots need to be cleared, that snow's got to go somewhere. And unfortunately, it can't go in the wetlands. So what we've got is, you know, a lot of paved area, a lot of area that you have to clear snow from, but we haven't really had any dedicated areas to put it. So one of the things that we're going to be looking for is some sort of logical way for they're going to, for them to remove snow from the site. One of the other things we noted was that the units are very close to the street, so there's going to be a lot of activity on that street, so we want to be careful that the streets have the right controls in place and people aren't driving too fast with them. So whatever we can do to sort of minimize the tendency for cars to travel quickly through those areas is going to be a good thing. And then probably the last general comment I had, and I think it's real important for the ZBA to see this information, is some sort of construction phasing plan. So as you can imagine, the site's tight, so, you know, it takes a lot of space to build a project. Not such a problem in the early phases, but as you get late in the job and the balance of the site is built out, you start running out of space to do the things that you need to do. What I think would be helpful for the ZBA to see is a phasing plan that shows a thoughtful approach to how this is going to get built out. I understand there are market forces and things like that, but it should be thought about and should be documented as part of this process so that at least the ZBA and the community understand when things are likely to happen and how they're likely to happen. We'll move just real quickly into stormwater. Thought the stormwater was well-designed, but again, everything was very tight. We had certain detention basins that went within 10 feet of a house. So, you know, all that says to me is that there may be too much in one location, and this speaks to Bob's point about density, is sort of density figures itself out as you start addressing these problems. So you'll see some of these problems go away if you lose a unit here, lose a unit there because they're too close to a detention basin, or they're too close to an intersection, or, you know, there's just an awkward way of access. You find that the sort of, the density sort of finds its own level once you start dealing with all these issues. My sense is, is that they're not going to, there's no more room for anything else. So really, there's probably only one way that this is going to go, which is fewer units. The nice thing about that is as you lose units, or I shouldn't say as you lose units, as you sort of free up space on the site, you start addressing some of these problems that we've noted in our comments. Again, stormwater, stormwater was kind of a technical measure of our review, but it was well-done, so I have no doubt that when this is all said and done, they'll be able to demonstrate that they meet the performance standards. The question is, is how it gets done. One more big thing is, we also looked at water and sewer. In talking with the folks in the town, we don't necessarily think there's a capacity issue, but what's really important is that the applicant demonstrate that they've studied it and they provide basis that the ZBA can use for making a decision that there's adequate supply for water and sewer to handle the development. So what we'd suggest that the applicant provide is a memorandum, sort of laying out the framework for how they've made that determination and laying out the justification for why there's adequate supply. What we want to make sure doesn't happen is that you introduce flow from 300 new units into the sewer system and we create problems downstream. That's typically not a very heavy lift for the applicant to do, but it's a critical piece of information for the board to have when they're reviewing the impacts of the project. As far as wetlands, I know the project is getting reviewed by the Conservation Commission. It appears that they've provided adequate buffers to most of the wetlands in and around the project, so it's, I'm not uncomfortable again that they won't be able to do the project for any reason, it's just that there's certain adjacency issues that things get really tight, but they have left pretty good buffers between the wetlands and the surrounding development, so I'm comfortable that they'll be able to manage those things. This does beg the question again about phasing. Again, as you get later in the development and more of the site is developed and you have less space to physically do the things that you need to do for construction, the stress on those areas around the wetlands that were otherwise set aside for buffer zones, you know, things start encroaching on them, your construction activities. So it would be good to see a phasing plan and a construction staging plan that shows where their construction trailers are going to be, where their materials are going to be stored, how their trucks are going to come in and out, things like that that give the community a better understanding of where and how things are going to happen. Last two things are traffic and sort of the environmental history. Traffic, again, tough intersection near the railroad crossing, so we've got to be real sensitive to how that new site driveway entering onto Summer Street right by the railroad crossing, what kind of potential issues that might create. We've asked the applicant to take a look at that and make sure that they meet standards for that. I'm sure as the community knows, the intersection of Naposet Street, Summer Street, and Washington Street is a pretty wonky intersection, it's got some problems in the morning, got some problems in the evening. This project is certainly not going to help those, at least as currently proposed. They're definitely causing a degradation in level of service at that intersection and creating some acute problems at that location. We've asked the applicant to go back and come up with some mitigative strategies for that intersection. We also have asked the applicant to consider a little bit more total responsibility when it comes to providing a safe pedestrian connection from the project to the school. I think the applicant has done a sketch plan, but they've only offered for some financial contribution. In our position, we usually recommend that they take more of a proactive role in actually seeing that outcome before the units are occupied, because after all, they're going to have some, almost 50 new students going to the school, so want to make sure that they can get to the school safely. As far as the contamination history goes, we really found very little, if anything, to be concerned about. We looked through all the environmental history on the Bird Machine Company site, really from a groundwater standpoint, very, 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 very low likelihood that anything from that site would have impacted groundwater on this site. So we think from a public safety standpoint that that's an issue that we're pretty comfortable can be put to bed for now, unless something pops up during the course of construction, which we're not expecting. In summary, I think the work was done, really well-done, the team of engineers they have is great, it's just a question of how much can the site bear and how much flexibility are they going to have when they're done.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. So we're hearing the same thing from you about density that we heard from Cliff. A lot of the things that you talked about, everything from the rail, the fact that there's a railroad right next to it, you know, the zoning board can put conditions on such as, you know, a fence that runs the length of the property, snow storage, we can address that, speed bumps, you talked about units close to the street, speed bumps, construction phasing, these are things that we can put conditions on. But it sounds like your overriding theme is that we're running into a density issue. Is that, is that correct?
Well, you, in putting those conditions on the project, you in effect force them to address the density, so if there are certain things that we preclude from a condition standpoint, then, you know, the density might take care of itself, but I, my professional opinion is that right now, there's just too much on a site and it's too close to everything. So you call it density or call it unit makeup, you know, there's just, there's no breathing room on the site.
Okay. Okay, any other board members have questions?
I did, I had questions previously about the stadium, but I guess I can just wait on it, no big deal.
Okay. Any other board members have questions or comments? Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Hale, I see you there. You ready? You have some comments?
Yes. Now, just, I would like to say that I, you know, I appreciate the opinions of Mr. Bomer and Mr. Riordan, and, you know, we have, we have taken their comments seriously, and we've come up with a revised plan, which is the, which is the plan that's now before you, and I have a team of people that are with me tonight to walk through the revised plan to show how we've responded to the comments that we can respond to and want to respond to. And that team consists of Brent Mogul from Mogul Architects and his colleague, Jeremy Baldwin, Katie Enright, who's with our engineering firm, Will Levine, who's with our legal team, and Ken Cram, who's our traffic engineer with the Bayside Engineering. And so is it possible to get all of those folks admitted so that they can speak and walk you through?
So, Mr. Hale, tonight, the plan for this meeting was to go over the peer review and what had been filed, the proposed, the original plan, and that's the plan that we're working off of as of right now. So you've submitted a new plan, which, is that what you now want to have as the plan of record?
That's the plan that has been officially submitted and is the plan that is before you, yes. It's a response to publicly available peer review comments and town department comments. And in fact, you know, just having peer review, peer review the original plan that was done before we were aware and had been, and town comments and peer review had been made available is kind of silly. You know, we submitted a revised plan that responded to town department head comments and peer review comments back in May. So, you know, Mr. Bomer, for instance, did not take into account comments from town department heads and the Conservation Commission when, you know, when he made suggestions, which is fine, we are where we are, but, you know, we need, we have to take into account conservation issues and town department head issues and peer review issues, and so, you know, we've done that, we did that in one iteration in May, and we've recently done that again, and I think that it, you know, we're here. It makes sense to make the board and the public aware of the plan that is before you today, that was submitted, accepted.
But what we just had was, we had the peer review comments for the plan that they reviewed, and they've submitted letters and a report on what they reviewed, and now you've submitted a new plan, and the public is here tonight that's going to, that's going to comment on the plans that were submitted.
The public is here to learn about the project as it's currently proposed, and what's currently proposed responds to peer review comments, and that's what the public wants to see. First of all, you know, keep in mind that there are 17 units that are viewable from the street of 300. So, you know, I think the public wants to perhaps see the whole project, but it has see the whole project, but it has, and, and we want the project to work the best that it can. But from a visual point of view, there's not much to see
I don't want to go forward.
Beyond the first 650 feet. At any rate, I, I've asked a question. I have a team of people here that are here so that we can present a plan that specifically responds to peer review comments. I'd like to present that plan.
What you've done is you've submitted a plan to the town, which is now going to be the plan on record. We can review that, the people in the town can take a look at that plan, and then we can move forward with that new plan. I don't think we're going to accomplish anything tonight with you explaining what this new plan is when people haven't had a chance to take a look at it.
If you let us screen share and show the plan and show how it responds to peer review.
The Davis Square Report was done August 13th.
What's that?
The Davis Square Report was done August 13th.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Ashley.
Thank you. So, the, the goal of working with the peer reviewers is that
So if he made changes after August 13th and presented a new plan, that was like three weeks ago.
This plan's revised on September 14th.
The board doesn't always agree with what the peer reviewers say, which is why kind of doing this process in a particular order is, is important. And so I think that the goal of tonight was to hear from the peer reviewers for the first time. You've not heard anything about this project. And to, to kind of discuss what, what they've identified as things that are concerns and things that are not concerns. And ideally, you would give the applicant a charge. The applicant's mentioned he's gone to department heads and different boards and different departments and different people, but ultimately, it's this board that votes on whether or not to grant the comprehensive permit. So it's this board that needs to be giving direction to the applicant, and the applicant should take that under consideration. I have, I mean, that's not to say that engineering and conservation, all these departments are not super important and vital to this process. I just want to make sure that it's clear to you, and I'm sure it is, that this is your application.
No, 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 no. This is not your application, Mr. Chairman. This is my application and my company's application. And we're the developer, we're in charge of, of proposing a project. And, you know, we can take peer review and, and your comments into consideration and will, but we're going to propose a project that meets all the health, safety, and environmental requirements and provides as much affordable housing as possible.
Okay. So, at this point, Mr. Hale, you've submitted a revised plan, and I believe the latest revision on the plan was September 15th? So that was just a week ago. We've had comments from peer review to, you know, help improve this process, improve this operation. Now we're, hey, now we're waiting to hear from the town, we're now waiting to hear from people in the town as far as what they, their concerns are for the site.
They cannot comment unless they see the plan. The purpose of this hearing is to show them the plan as it's now proposed. To, to not show them the plan is just plain being obstructive. And not only that, it's using a different format than you use for 40A projects. Phil Mackey told me on Friday that he's been doing this for years, and typically what happens is, you know, there's a working group with peer review, and then his clients revise the plan, and they present the revised plan to the board. So if you're telling me that that is, you know, that you're making a special process for 40Bs that's different, that's just again, plain discriminatory. There is no reason to keep my plan as proposed from the public. And by not allowing us to show the plan tonight, you're keeping the plan from the public. This is a public hearing. What, what is the possible explanation to deny the public the right to view the plan as it's now proposed?
All of the plans are on the town website. I'm sorry, I need to interject that because I, I'm not comfortable with making this.
Are, are you the chairman?
Could you please let me finish and not interrupt me? What I'm saying is that all of these plans are available online. We had an agenda set out, we had agreed that we would discuss peer review, and we would give feedback to the developer, and there would be an opportunity for public comment.
But it's public comment on a plan that's, 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 first of all,
Board could approve your
We revised the plan and submitted a revised plan in May, in May. Their, their, their comments are based on a plan that was
September 15th.
Submitted in January. That makes no sense.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
No. First off, the plan that we have before us has a revision date of September 15th, so, or September 14th. I'm not going to get into something that happened in May as far as the plan. This is the plan that we're dealing with now. So, that being said, what we're going to do is, as we had originally planned, the public has seen the plan that was submitted, and if there's new ones that have been now posted on the town website, we want to hear from the public as far as what their concerns are for this, this project. So, Mr. Hale, you've used up enough of the time that you were going to be allocated to address some of the issues, but that were related to peer review. So now we're going to open it up to the public. So if there's people in the public that have some questions or comments, Ashley, will you let them in?
Yeah, I think Town Council wanted to add something.
Well, what I was going to say really doesn't, I was just going to remind the chairman, as he knows, that this is his meeting.
Yes.
And, and Chairman Lee, you're, you're doing a great job, and you can run this meeting however you want. Furthermore, I would like to note that this whole 200 days and, you know, things since May, we are in a pandemic. There is Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, which allows this zoning board to do exactly what it's been doing in, in the past and to continue these hearings, because clearly, this isn't the forum that anyone wants to review a 300-unit facility or housing development. No one wants to do it this way. We are unfortunately in a pandemic, and so we have to do it this way. And furthermore, I, I think that any allegation that this is discriminatory because we're not treating this as we would treat a 40A, and again, I would repeat, this is a 300-unit housing development, which it's highly unlikely that this board under 40A has reviewed the same type of housing development with the, with the same density. And so I think that the comments that, that have been made so far by the architect and by the engineer are valid. They, the density is a direct correlation to health and safety because of traffic and site circulation and things like that. The public was extremely engaged at the first hearing, which was in March, prior to the state of emergency. And I think that the public, the, they're basing their comments on this original plan, which is what the peer reviewers base their comments on. It's unfortunate that the applicant did jump the gun and make all these, you know, make revisions to the plans without hearing from the public and from comments from the public. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I 100% support the position that you're taking and how you're moving this meeting forward.
Okay, thank you, Town Council. What we'll do now is, Ashley, will you admit people in that have questions from the, from the public about this project?
Is anybody who would like to give public comment on the Summer Street 40B? I see there's folks for our next application, but if you're here to give comments for the Summer Street 40B application, if you could please use the, the raise your hand feature so that I know that you'd like to give a comment, or put your name in the chat box. So what I'll do is I'll go one at a time. I'll say your name, and then I'll give you permission to talk, and then you can provide your comment. And then when you're done, I'll remove your permission to talk, which sounds strange, but that's, that's what we're working with. And so the first person whose hand is raised is William Hamilton. So, William, you should be able to speak now.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. One of the things that I've noticed is that the, the applicant is not totally aware that the Walpole Water Resource Protection District overlay was approved by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, which means that Area 3 and Area 2 are both Zone 2s, which impact the density by state regulation. So that should be taken into consideration on the density of this. Now, the second thing that I have is, in my opinion, the ZBA should not approve this application because this mega project is within a mile of the only MWRA sludge dump in Massachusetts, approved by the DEP. Such a project can tip our town into receivership when the sludge dump starts receiving sludge, because collecting taxes within a mile of the sludge dump stops, as it has in other states. The town's tax burden and fixed costs stay the same. When Chelsea was unable to collect the taxes from the abandoned properties, it went into receivership. Now, Dr. Silber, I got to know quite well, and he explained that Chelsea, because they had gone, they had removed their retirement program from the local to the state, they saved the pensions. When they went into receivership, they saved the pensions and the vested interest of the employees of Chelsea. Now, he urged me to have Walpole do that. I, I couldn't get Walpole to go to the state system. Therefore, if this major, mega project is approved, and it's within a mile of the MWRA sludge site, retired invested employees of the town are at risk of losing their hard-earned pensions. Now, it's not a question of if sludge will come, it's more of a question of when. Under the sludge dump offer, now, I'm reading from it, I'm going to submit this, a UPI archives June 17, 1993. Under the sludge dump offer, the MWRA promised to seek a 25-year contract with one of four out-of-state disposal firms to get rid of sludge. In return, the town would draw up all lawsuits challenging the landfill, citing processes that issued local permits to the MWRA to operate the Walpole landfill in the event of an emergency. So he could, he could operate that tomorrow if they needed it through some emergencies. Governor William Weld was against it. However, the Department of Environmental Protection approved it. So we have an approved sludge dump site, which was within a mile of this project, which is a mega project. And local residents who actually went to states where this had happened and said that the smell was intolerable from the sludge dump site. Now, many homeowners near the proposed site back then, back in 1993, were unable to sell their homes because the banks refused to lend mortgages to the buyers. So this is an important concern. It's important for the homeowners, and it's important for the people who are working for the town, and especially the retirees. Now,
Okay, Mr. Hamilton, thank you. That's three minutes for your comments on that. Okay, Ashley, do we have somebody else?
Next hand raised was Bill Abbott. So, Bill, you have permission to speak now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Can hear you, Billy.
Okay. Sean Redden mentioned that there was a need to document that there, if there is water and sewer capacity for the development. But another concern is that, from what I've seen, there is no looping of the water mains in this development with the rest of the town's water system. There's only one way for water to get into the development. And looping of the system with the rest of the water system seems to be, needed to be addressed, not only for just being able to supply water to the folks in the development if there's a break in the water mains, or for fire protection, the same case. That's the end of my comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abbott. And what we can do is, we can have the applicant address that in the, in the future and figure out how, how to move forward on that. Okay, Ashley, who else do we have?
The person whose hand is raised is Erica Burden. Erica, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, hi, Ashley. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to address a, address a concern that Mr. Hale made before, a statement that implied that the public only is concerned about the appearance from the street. So he made a comment that, you know, it's a 300-unit complex, but we're only going to be seeing 17 units from the street. So, over the past several months, we voiced a number of concerns, none of which have to do with appearance. So, as the peer reviewers have stated, we're concerned about the density of the project, very much based on the train tracks being there, the traffic, you know, a lot of us living, that actually live here near that development, have young kids. We do walk to school, we're right near the train track. So a 300-unit complex is only going to add to, and it's only going to make the area worse, from our opinion, with traffic and safety. So, his comment was a little bit disturbing, to be honest, that it just implied that we care about the appearance from the street, and I don't think anybody cares about that. It's so much more than that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was relayed to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more hands raised? And I don't see any names submitted into the chat, so I'm hoping people can find the hand raise button and find the chat. Otherwise, I will plug, we do have an email set up, it's zba@walpole-ma.gov. If there are folks watching either on Walpole Media or over the Zoom that want to email in any comments, we will get those to the board.
Okay. If there's no more public comments on that, what we're going to do is, we're going to continue this hearing. And I'd like to continue that, this hearing out until October 5th. And on October 5th, we will have a opportunity for just public, public comments on this, this project. I encourage people to take a look at the new set of plans that has been submitted, because that is now the set of plans of record for this, this project that the applicant has sent forward. And anything that you have to comment on should be based upon those new sets of plans that have been submitted to the board. Zoning Board members, any comments or any other things to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next thing would be to continue this out until the next meeting. Ashley, I see you there. What's up?
Chairman Lee, I just had a question about how you would like to proceed with work sessions.
At, at this time, I, I don't see any need to schedule another work session. I think that we're going to do everything in the, the public domain with public hearings at this point. I'm not sure that the work session accomplished what the zoning board had in mind as far as transparency of this project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So on October 5th, will we have an opportunity to present the project and how it responds to peer review comments?
The next pro, the next hearing for October 5th will be just for the people of Walpole or anybody else concerned to voice their comments on this proposal. So it's going to be public comments, not applicants' comments. Okay.
I, I'd like to make one other comment. And that, you know, good example of And that, you know, good example of the reason that peer review should have been based on the submission in May, is that the water line was looped, and that was done as a result of comments and discussions with town departments. And so the original plan submitted in January was no longer, is no longer even valid, and had been replaced by the May, and this is crazy.
So, Chairman, a couple things on that. My understanding in speaking with Sean Riordan, where the changes were kind of further developing the engineering and not really changes to site planning issues, and I also just wanted to point out, there's somebody else whose hand was raised for public comment, so if we have a moment, we've got one more person who's raised their hand.
Okay, we'll take one more.
Joanne Mulligan, you should be able to speak now.
Do you need?
Yes, now we can.
Thank you, everyone, thank you to the peer reviewers. Just to clarify, so the new, we have new plans now, that we can all look at, that Cliff and Sean have not reviewed. Is that correct? So we're really kind of back to square one on environment and design, excuse me, engineering and design. I feel like there's always new plans every time we have a meeting, but I just will also say, I really appreciate the people that made the comments about the pandemic, because I feel like as citizens, living around this proposed development, it's been really hard to kind of stay on top of what's going on, doing these, you know, meetings through Zoom. Obviously, the October 5th meeting will, I guess, be by Zoom again. I think this is a really, you know, it's a huge project that has a big impact on the town, not only self-Walpole, and it's extremely difficult to be doing it in this kind of environment. I know there's really nothing we can do about it, but it's very hard, and so you'll put the new plans up on the website.
They're already there, yeah, they're already online.
This just seems, yeah, a little, and I appreciate Erica's comments, I think it's really true, I 100% agree with her, that, you know, 17 units that we can see, or however many is, it doesn't matter, there's so many other issues with this development that are negative. And, you know, I very much appreciated hearing about the density concerns, I think, and the safety concerns. One access in and out is absolutely ridiculous. It's a very, very congested area, and will totally be impacting this, the whole area around Summer Street, Winter Street, Route 1, even, everything. It's going to, you know, 300 units is a lot of people. But thank you, and thank you, Ashley, for posting anything.
Okay. Ashley, at this point, if there's nobody else that wants to comment, we're going to continue this hearing until October 5th, and it will be a Zoom meeting. I don't, and the public will be able to pose questions. The goal for that meeting is exactly that, for the public to take a look at the plans, and they will be able to give comments as far as the updated set of plans, which was revised as of 9/14, so just over a week ago. Okay? So I want to, could I have a motion to continue this until October 5th?
7:00 PM, so moved.
Till 7:00 PM, online, moved by Suzanne.
Second.
Second by Drew Delaney. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Bob Fitzgerald.
I think he...
I think he had to leave the meeting. Okay? Drew Delaney.
Aye.
Suzanne Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Jane Coffey.
Aye.
Jane Coffey, aye, and John Lee, aye. So this is continued until October 5th at 7:00 PM, and the purpose of that meeting will be public comments on this, on the revised set of plans that has been submitted by the applicant. Okay, thank you, everybody, we've got another hearing after this, and this is for the Doopy Street 40B, and this is case number 0520, Wall Street Development Corporation, Doopy Street, comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass. General Laws 40B, Section 20 through 23 as amended, to allow construction of a 12 duplex condominiums in six buildings. Is the applicant here for this?
Is he here? And I just promoted, I believe, his engineer.
John, just a trick, if you want to know? You just hold down the space button, it unmutes it, and as soon as you let it go, it turns on, so you don't have to keep clicking, so if you want to talk, just hold it down and talk, let it go, should work. You just kind of hold it down as long as you want to talk.
The spacebar?
Yep. It's not working.
Not on this one.
Rob Truax, and if you could admit, Bill Scully, I believe, is on the line, too.
Ah. He's under his William, one second. Okay.
Do you have to read this? Do you have to read it?
Oh, wow, where's the outside?
Where the hell was he?
All right, I'm here.
Where is he?
Thank you, Ashley.
So Chairman Lee, I believe everyone is here from the applicant's team.
So, Ashley, do, I have the notice from March 18th. How did we handle this? This case was opened, or do I have to read the public notice at this time? You're on mute. Oh, can you turn that off?
So we opened this hearing, and then we've continued it to a date certain. So, I believe tonight, Mr. Petrosi will be providing the introduction to the project, so you've not been introduced to this project yet. We started to try and get peer review in order, but deferred that into how the applicant had a chance to present the project to this board, so we're going to do that presentation. There are members from the public here, I don't know if they plan to give public comment or not, but we were certainly capable of doing that. And then, tonight, I would request that the board take up the traffic engineering peer review discussion again.
Are you good with that, Suzanne?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. What we're going to do now is, we're going to have Mr. Petrosi, the applicant for this, explain this project on Doopy Street. Doopy Street is located off of High Plains Street, also known as Route 27, and, Mr. Petrosi, welcome, and please go ahead and explain the proposal for your project. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a very, we've been waiting anxiously to have an opportunity to discuss the project.
These trials have been revised.
As you probably are aware, the project site is approximately 52,000 square feet of land area, made of land that's situated off of Doopy Street. And Doopy Street is a paper street, which is partially constructed to approximately a distance of 300 or 400 feet, as a half gravel, half paved roadway, narrow. Our project will be extending Doopy Street approximately another 500 or 600 feet, paving the roadway to a width of 20 feet in width, and we will be proposing to construct six duplex buildings, 12 units in total, pretty simple residential development that we're proposing on land that is heavily treed at this point. It will be a dead-end street, there will be a private way. We'll provide a hammerhead turnaround for emergency vehicles at the end of the proposed roadway. There is a right-of-way that exists that would allow a connection to Summit Avenue. At this point, the town does not want to aid in the construction of that right-of-way to include connection to Summit Avenue, and so we have, our original project did include the connection to Summit Avenue, but at the town's request, we have reduced the roadway and the number of units to the number of 12, rather than the 16 that was previously proposed. I have with me Rob Truax of GLM Engineering. He can discuss the technical aspects of the project relative to the drainage and stormwater management. Prior to the submission of these plans, we did have an opportunity to meet with the town engineer. Some of those comments, or some of that discussion has already been included in the plans that were submitted. And also, we have Bill Scully with us, traffic consultant, to discuss any traffic questions that are on the minds of the neighbors, the board members. So, the chairman would like to hear from Rob Truax briefly, and then we can talk about traffic.
Okay, thank you. What we're going to do is, we will hear from Rob Truax. I want to make sure that everybody's working on the same set of plans. The plans that I have in front of me are dated August 5th, 2020. Is that the most updated set of plans that you've submitted to the town?
I believe about.
Is that this one? No, I only have February.
I have February than June updated, but I don't have these, this is what Drew has.
Where did Drew get those?
Online.
Online?
I pulled them today.
I have no plans.
Okay, I want to...
Yeah, I got nothing.
Can you turn that? What's the date of the most recent plans?
We submitted the drainage report and an updated set of plans, Chairman, on August 5th. I think you're looking at the correct one.
Okay.
It's August 5th?
No, it's, this is the most updated set of plans, so that's fine.
You have August 5th?
Drew printed it off from online, so that's the most updated set of plans.
So we're going to use, I hope she's going to put them on the screen.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody knows what the plans that we're looking at, and they are dated August 5th, that's the plans of record, and they are on the town website. Okay. Okay, can you turn that up?
Up.
Yep, we're ready to go.
I was going to talk to him, but I'm going to need to...
Okay, Mr. Truax, do you want to go ahead?
John, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Rob Truax of GLM Engineering Consultants. Do I have the ability to share my screen, Mr. Chairman?
I hope so.
You should be able to...
There you go, thank you, Drew.
Okay, you should be all set now.
Good. Yay.
Is that up for everyone to see? I want to make sure I have a colored plan up on the screen now that shows the site. If anyone can't see that, please let me know, and I'll... So this is the site that's located off of High Plains Ave, it's in between High Plains Ave and Summit Ave. As Mr. Petrosi indicated, it's about 50, just over 50,000 square feet. The project area is highlighted in the white screen, which has the units highlighted. So right now, the existing road of Doopy Street comes in about 300 feet, which is what they call town maintained, however private way. It is a gravel road, it comes in, the only portion is paved at the apron, which is about 10 to 15 feet at the entrance of High Plains Ave. There's an existing sewer line that extends up into the Doopy Street area, there's a sewer main in front, sewer manhole in front of the existing house number eight, which is located in front of a garage as well, between the two homes. So this area here that's shaded and showing here, this is the existing gravel way that comes in, it's slightly shaded, and the darker shaded area is the proposed pavement that would extend up to the rear of the site. So the way that utilities work on the site, there's actually an existing water stub that comes in, an eating stub that comes in off of High Plains Ave. After some conversations with the town engineer, that stub's very old, probably hasn't been there a long time, so it's a recommendation of the town engineer, we're actually going to terminate that stub, we're going to cap it, going to dig that up and cap it, and put a stub on the, actually on the other side of the roadway, put a new water stub and water manhole in the site. So that water would extend from High Plains Ave, go down, bones, the existing Doopy Street, all the way down to the end of the site, where it would wrap around the back of the units, which is unit 12, and then connect into another town water line that comes through Anheuser on the back corner of the property, right here, this location near Summit Ave. There's a water line that comes in off Summit Ave, comes up through Anheuser, clips the corner of Velocas, and then goes back out towards, I guess that would be down towards Victoria Circle. So that would be a water line loop that would go from High Plains all the way out to Summit Ave. As far as the sewer goes, we would connect into the existing manhole that's up by house number eight. I think the only thing we have to do is just be sure that that line is in good condition. Maybe it will need to be cambered and cleaned out and just verified what the condition of that existing pipe is, and then we would extend that up to the end of the road, which is around station 7 plus 50 in front of unit number 10. That would provide sewer toll units, all 12 units, six buildings. As far as the drainage goes, the existing site has a high point located in it existing now, which is pretty much, not quite centrally located, but further towards Summit Ave, and which some of the surface will go towards Summit Ave, and the rest of the surface will kind of range down towards High Plains Street. So what we're trying to do in keeping with that is, we're trying to keep the drainage coming towards High Plains Street, we're putting a high point in the road down around hammerhead turnaround, bringing that water down, collecting here, drainage basin, which is located in front of the site in the kind of a triangular shaped area. And we're also putting a swale on the back of the units to direct the water from going off-site onto the neighborhood of Victoria Circle, bringing that water down to the drainage basin as well. If you're familiar with Summit Ave, there's no drainage currently at the end of Summit Ave, so we're really trying not to direct any water in that direction as low as possible. So it's just really the tail end of the site that actually flows via overland towards Summit Ave. If you've been out in that area, Summit Ave kind of just comes to an end, there's a paved area that ends, and then there's like a, right down in this area. Here, there's a, looks like a paved sidewalk, which is burned, and I believe the water from Summit Ave comes down and directs through that waterway, sidewalk, walkway, et cetera, and goes down through that area. There is no underground cash basis, so to speak, in Summit Ave. There is no underground catch basin, so to speak, in Summit Ave, that, and that street. So for that, we're just trying to keep our drainage focused towards High Plain. So this drainage basin, what it does is it overflows to an outlet structure, goes into a manhole, and then we're gonna pipe it down to the drainage in High Plain Ave. There's currently a couple of catch basins at High Plain Ave at the end of Doopy Street. We would take and replace one of the catch basins with a manhole. Relocate that catch basin just to the south of that, up into Doopy Street, with a manhole there. So that way, we have catch basin, manhole configuration going out to High Plain Drainage System, which currently does not exist. With the drainage, it's there, goes catch basin to catch basin, and then down to the manhole, that's further down the line. So that, that came about from conversation again with the town engineer. And that's another reason for moving the water line to the side of the road, so we have the ability, flexibility to rearrange some of the drains that's going on in that corner of the street right there. So I think, with that said, that's kind of an overview of everything of the site, as far as the utilities, the drainage, et cetera. So, if you can answer any questions anyone has, or you can let Mr. Scully speak about the traffic a little bit if you'd like.
Anybody have questions? 'Cause I got one. Uh, Mr. Truax, as I look at the elevations, are you going to have a swale or something to prevent water from leaving your site and going out to the properties on Victoria Circle?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so all along, let's see this, right, can you see my arrow on the screen? All along this backside right here, there's a four foot wide grass swale behind all the units. Going right through here. This dash line that you see in the back of the units, along the property line, that's a four foot wide grass swale. It will direct the water from behind these units all the way down to the drainage basin.
The water line that you're proposing up Doopie Street, would that, would you provide new connections for all the residents currently?
Yeah, because right now, they have services that come in from High Plain Street. It's, there's, there's a service that comes up to the house at number three, and then there's a service that comes up to the house at number eight. I think the ones on the corner, at least number two fifty-three, I know goes out front, but at least those two and possibly the one two fifty-seven on the corner would need the water services. And we would connect those. It would be part of the, part of the project.
Any other questions? Okay, are there any other questions from other board members for engineering? And for the public, we're gonna get you after we hear from the next proponent from the applicant. Okay, okay, who's next?
Wanna hear from Bill Scully?
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna try to share my screen. See, can you guys see that or not?
No.
Not yet.
Okay. Now?
Yes.
This was done today.
All right.
See the date?
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, public. My name is William Scully, I'm with Green International Affiliates, and we were retained by the applicant to complete a traffic assessment, traffic review for this project. We followed the latest guidance from the board in terms of a small project. So it's a limited traffic review where we estimate how much traffic would be generated by the project, check site distances, and we also checked large vehicle fire apparatus moving in and out of the site. And, and through the last, I don't know, maybe four to six months, I know there's been some comments from town engineer or fire departments, and we, we were getting the police department, we reviewed them, and, and we did prepare. The initial report, I believe, was submitted to the board dated June 2nd. And then we did a follow-up supplemental response to some of the comments and some additional information, and that was dated July 16th. So this is, is the site as Rob was talking about. The blue shaded area just very approximates the location of the new homes. The red circle is the intersection of High Plain Street and Doopie Street. And if you go to the right of the, of Doopie Street on this photograph, you'll, you'll hit Old Post Road, and then beyond that, you hit Route One, not too far away. Town center is towards the left, Washington Street. So the existing conditions, and again, I may be repeating some of those things, but Doopie Street is currently unagroomed, it's gravel, it's, it is dead end, serves several homes, it's fairly narrow. And it intersects High Plain Street, where almost a half a mile or so is included. It does operate as a stop control, which is sort of normal. As you leave, you're gonna stop and see what's coming along High Plain Street. And you do have good visibility along High Plain Street. High Plain Street has a sidewalk in the area, and this picture shows the recent improvement to the ADA ramp. Picture on the white side of that slide shows an illustration of Doopie Street from High Plain Street. And as you go further, it's more of a, more gravel. The proposed project that we looked at was the twelve units of housing, two parking spaces per unit, that includes a garage space. The proposal is to reconstruct Doopie Street to twenty feet width, the street. As Lou indicated, will have made a dead end. At the intersection of the High Plains, utility poles have to be relocated, and new roundings made at the intersection, and new ADA compliant sidewalk ramps will have to be put in. And as Rob talked about, there will be a hammerhead turnaround for fire apparatus. And in our July memorandum, we attached information in that too. It started out, I think, as a cul-de-sac, a normal circle in the original plan, and we've got changed to a hammerhead. We've tested both, and in this case, the hammerhead does work. The amount of traffic potential from the project, it's twelve, twelve units of housing. We've assumed typical single-family homes. And based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, we've estimated the daily traffic as well as the peak hour traffic. In the peak hours, in total, thirteen vehicle trips were estimated based on the twelve units. And in the morning, normally, everyone, most people are exiting. That's what is summarized here on the table. And in the afternoon, there's a little bit more of a balance, but more people tend to be entering, coming back home from work, or running errands or whatever during that afternoon peak hour. Site distance, we looked at, we measured that in the field. And following standard procedure, and you can see to and from the east, we have over eight hundred feet available for both stopping site distance and intersection site distance. For High Plains Street in that area, we need two hundred fifty feet, at least for all the different directions and types of site distances. And to and from the west, we've got four hundred feet of stopping site distance, which is the most critical. But we also have three hundred fifty feet of intersection site distance, both of which exceed the two hundred fifty foot requirement. And I, these are in the memos, but they illustrate the site triangles in the, in both the east and the west directions. This, these, this diagram, again, these were included in the previous memos, illustrate the fire apparatus ability to get in and out of Doopie Street, as well as at the hammerhead, being able to turn around. And, and another thing to note is the improvement from today's condition to twenty feet of paved driveway with radii at the corners with High Plain makes the fire apparatus be able to get in and out of that street a lot better than it does today. And I think that was noted, I believe, in the deputy chief's comment letter. And let's see, in the end, in the end, I mean, it's twelve units of housing, and as, as the board knows, you've set these regulations up, whereas under twenty units of housing, you know, really, I think, recognize it's not a major traffic generated impact. This is a small generator. And, but the improvements in Doopie Street do have, our, our positive thing, fire truck access will show can be accommodated, as well as the site distances. And in the, in the documents that we provided, we included, you know, the recommendations that I touched on at the beginning of the presentation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Now or later.
Okay, I've got a, got a few questions. Is Doopie Street a town-accepted street?
I, I don't believe, I don't believe so.
Okay, so a portion of it is maintained by the town? Is that what I saw in the plan?
It's on previous records that we've, during our research, it, it was indicated that the town does do some maintenance. I'm not sure if they allow it, or, but they do do some type of maintenance there. Nobody's really been able to tell us what kind of maintenance they do, but shown on the plans that it was previously made, that's been maintained by the town in some fashion. But it's, I, I don't believe it's a public way at this point.
Okay, so that's one, one issue. The other one is, this new roadway that you're proposing to build up, will that be built out to town standards, and then you'll be able to, the town would be able to accept this street?
Uh, not, well, it'd be built to town standards with the, from the standpoint of the construction of the roadway. We're proposing a twenty-foot paved width of the roadway, but, you know, the right of way itself is only, I think, twenty-seven feet wide. So whether or not the town decides that they want to accept it as a public way is up to the selectmen, I guess. But you, for a town, a subdivision roadway today requires a minimum right of way width of forty-six feet, and usually pavement, I think, of twenty-six feet with sidewalks and curbing. So it would be up to the town, town meeting, to whether or not they wanted to accept it or not.
Right, so it's, it would not be built to town standards, what you just described there? Okay, and for the traffic engineer, how did you determine site distances as far as vehicles exiting Doopie Street onto High Plain Street?
Uh, well, we follow procedures in the American Association of State Transportation and Highway Officials guidelines, which is what NASTIOT uses. And so we're set back from the edge line on High Plain Street, look left and right, measure when we see a vehicle approaching a height of, we're looking at three and a half feet coming at us. And when we see that, that vehicle approaching, we, we're able to measure down to that spot where we first, first observed that. So it's an actual field measurement of visibility, sitting on the approach, sitting back from High Plain Street and seeing what we, how we see approaching vehicles from both directions. Stopping site distance, we do in the, similar, but what you're doing on the approaching is you are driving along High Plain Street, and you're looking at the edge of where Doopie Street intersects with High Plain Street, and you're looking at a two-foot-high object at the edge, and we measure where we're able to spot that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a couple.
Okay. Uh, gorgeous, Suzanne.
Mine will be quick. Couple.
Mr. Scully, on page three of your July 16th memo to the board, pedestrian movement, you recommended or said that consequently, walking on the street would be safely accommodated. But the turn radii you have shaded for a fire apparatus to enter the street takes up the entire street. Has there been any more cons, or suggestions raised by your team as far as adding a sidewalk down the length of Doopie Street? Or is the drawing maybe not correct?
I think in that memo, I mean, we do say that potentially a sidewalk could be added, however, because of the now right of way, that it would need a little bit more, more analysis, more assessment of that. So, so the re, so there's a couple of things. One is, the roundings and everything at the intersection are gonna be able to accommodate a fire apparatus moving in, into the street. The reason why the comment was made in terms of, you know, a pedestrian walking down to High Plain Street on Doopie Street, it will be generally a safe thing to do, is that it's a dead-end street, that's how the Yanni houses on it, even after the project, it's how the Yanni houses. So, just in terms of, you know, I'm gonna walk down to High Plain Street and then walk up to the plaza at Route One. I'm gonna be able to do that safely. If the fire apparatus, which is, doesn't happen every day, but if they're coming into Doopie Street, they've got the horns and siren going and lights going, there's room on the side of the street to move off the street while a truck would happen to turn in there, if that even happened as someone's walking down the street casually. So, but at this point, I mean, the plan does not show a sidewalk. I mean, we've made the recommendation of crosswalk installed at High Plain, new ramps being reconstructed with the roundings that could be put in at that location. I don't think that's been fully designed yet with where the utility pole would have to get relocated to, but it's, it certainly, it has to when it counts.
So will you be submitting another plan with, including more assessment of that roadway for pedestrian traffic?
That's, that's probably Lou. We're not submitting a plan right now for that.
Okay. Go ahead, Suzanne.
I have a couple of questions. This, this project is right smack dab in, in between two schools, and the kids walk to both of them. They walk to Old Post, and they walk to East Junior High. So both are going to be walking. So we need to deal with that.
As, just as an example, I mean, someone can walk down to the sidewalk that's on High Plain Street. We get to Old Post, the signal there... You get to Old Post, the signal there has crosswalks.
Yep.
Get down. Again.
It, it's a major road in town. It's one of the busiest roads in town.
High Plains Street is, I fully agree. Doopie Street is not.
No, but High Plain is.
You're able to walk to High Plain without a problem and then use the High Plain Street sidewalk, which already exists there. And then use the, again, the Old Post School, you can get to the signal at Old Post Road and cross onto the sidewalks that ultimately bring you to the school. So that's, and that's pretty similar to what takes place if I'm living on Merrick or Civil or Harding and have kids go to that school. So it's nothing out of the ordinary that's different from those locations.
Well, those roads are tarred and they're a little bit better than a gravel road. And when you're a kid and you're walking in the rain and it's snowing and, you know, it's not very safe. So anyway, my other question is where, this is probably for Rob. I don't see guest parking or snow removal. But then again, I have no plan. I have an old plan. So maybe it's on the new plan. Do you see it? Rob, can you hear me?
Yeah, am I muted?
No, you're good now. I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. I thought I was muted. I thought I unmuted myself. So we, each unit accommodates two cars, one in the garage, one in the front.
Yep.
There really is no guest parking, other than if someone wants to park at the end of the turnaround, Eastman, at the Hammerhead.
No guest parking, alrighty.
There's no guest parking.
Okay.
Correct, other than the units themselves. There's two spaces per unit that are being provided.
Okay, so no company for anybody? And where is the snow removal?
Well, the snow would be removed as you plow down the road.
Yep, where you dumping it?
Well, you push it to the edges as they do when they plow any road down.
Yep.
When you get to the turnaround, you have the space off the end of the turnaround to put it.
Turnaround has a space, the Hammerhead, you mean?
Yeah, either one. You could push it down the end, pull its stomach, and you can push it off the end of the ground.
And does the fire chief know you're going to dump all the snow in the Hammerhead?
It won't be in the Hammerhead, it'll be on the grass up here.
And the fire chief knows that is the designated snow removal area?
I'm not sure what the fire chief thinks or knows on that subject, no.
Okay. No guest parking, no designated snow removal on the plan. I'm good, thank you. Ask him?
It's a fox.
It's a what? I'm muted. You ask him. Mojitos.
Okay.
Let's be one of the mojitos.
Okay. Let's, uh.
I actually have a caller.
Yeah, sure.
Hey.
Hey, 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 hey.
So I, I just, I just want to echo the comments of, of the snow removal and, and just also add that it should definitely be strongly looked at in the event that there was a lot of snow outside of plowing every square inch of that twenty-foot driveway and not having a designated pedestrian area, plus someone to walk left or right. It could be easy to see how that area would evaporate under those conditions and then you would have pedestrians, anyone walking up and down Doopie Street, probably walking in the middle of the street or roadway access point, et cetera.
You might want to do public, I guess?
That's something we can look at, put some thought into it.
Okay, that's a point. Like to open it up to the public, Ashley, if there's, I see we still have participants online. If there's some people from the public that want to comment, please let them in, thanks.
Yeah, so we have one hand raised. I'll start calling on folks as they raise their hand. If you can't find the raise hand button, just put your name in the chat and then I'll call on you. So the first hand I saw up was, wait, they're bouncing around, was Lisa Nelson. So Lisa, you should be able to unmute yourself and give your public comment.
Thank you. This actually, her husband, Dwayne. I'm just looking at the picture of the proposed area and it, it looks that the project's going to take and it looks like it's on both sides of Doopie Street. Why, I, I'm unclear about why that would be the case. Wouldn't it just be on one side of Doopie Street?
I can answer that one, Jamie. I think that's just, he's just highlighting an area in general. The project is on one side of Doopie Street. It's on the opposite side of where you live, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, then next we have, I might not say this correctly, but it's Janice Sallett. Janice, you should be able to.
Is that better now?
Yep, we can hear you. Oops, sorry.
Can you hear me?
I think I'm home. Yes.
You can hear Suzanne?
Yes.
Okay. I live at two fifty-seven High Plain and have so many issues. I did send a letter to the board, which I apologize for the length of it, but I will try to just quickly say a few points. And water is a big issue.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Petrosi's been dropped from the Zoom calls. So the best practice for that is we, we need to pause all testimony and pause the hearing so that we can get, no, it's, it's the, it's, so if we could just wait a minute and see if we can get the applicant back on the call, one second.
Are you on mute?
Yeah.
When you guys want, if you want to do this this.
I'm going to make a motion for traffic.
Right. But with the same night as the other hearing?
The seventh?
Yeah, no.
Fifth?
October fifth. So we'll, just like we did tonight?
Yeah. And are we going to do like one subject that night?
Yeah, both of them are going to be public.
Okay, so we should be reconnecting in a minute here. I'll look for him.
Jane said she's back. Oh yeah, there she is. Thank God for kids.
It'll be public comment.
Only.
We want to have here what the public has to say about both these projects.
And we'll see if we can get the peer review by then from traffic, maybe?
Yeah. And you know how you're going to word that tonight?
No, I'm just going to say I feel with the two schools that we need a peer review.
Right, for traffic.
Yeah. So we're waiting for that woman. The woman wrote a long letter.
Will the applicants be able to talk? When we're taking just public comments on it?
No, I want to just take public comments. I, I'm not, particularly what I heard tonight from, uh.
Yeah.
That guy makes me nervous not wearing a mask. It looks like he's sitting on the side of a street. I keep thinking he has a mask.
Nobody's wearing a mask in that picture.
Well, it's a fake picture.
No, I know.
But it, it makes me nervous.
So.
Sad, but true.
I'm just trying to see where Lou's still not here. That's great. Does he even know that he's not here?
I don't know, but God might have made it up.
I thought he actually said he's getting back on.
Maybe someone from his team can text him.
Yeah, I want to ask him if he's that.
Yep, can you turn that down?
Somebody from Mr. Petrosi's team, I don't know whether that's.
Rob.
Will, Bill or, or Rob. Would you text Mr. Petrosi and find out if he's coming back onto this meeting? Because we are waiting for him.
I have been texting him.
Oh, okay.
Trying to get on. Do we, do we absolutely have to have him here, Ashley, to continue?
That's what I, that's the direction that I've been giving.
Yeah.
That as soon as you lose an applicant.
Yes, we do need him because he'll use it against us.
Say that you can represent him, so.
Gotcha.
He has walked out of a meeting before, though.
He would throw Rob right under the bus like that.
No, I get it. I just wasn't sure how it works.
Rob knows it.
Okay, we're cooking into overtime.
Call him right on his cell phone?
Yeah.
Just a few points, if, if one of you want to call and have him on speakerphone.
Ooh. Come on, Rob. Oops, he can't hear me. I've lost all respect for him.
Okay, so after, continue?
Are you getting on this meeting, but waiting for you?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm, I'm almost there.
You're almost there.
Well, if he can hear us, we could move forward with him on speaker.
Yeah, let's let, let's let, there he is. Select, there he is.
You see him, Ashley?
I see.
Oh, I see him now, yeah. I'm back, I'm back, back. I know you missed me.
So Janice, I'm so sorry to have interrupted your public comment here. Um, please, please feel free to resume.
Okay, I know that Doug, the board has got to be tired already, but I'll just try to highlight, because there are so many things that I am so opposed to this project and believe that it was done underhandedly. But most important, the ADA ramps that were put in are quite dangerous. My foot, it's just an accident waiting for a place to happen. It's created a ditch. More importantly, by stuffing so many units into the end of the dead street is very, very dangerous to do. We have a traffic issue and Mr. Scully does not address it correctly. Initially, he said that my house didn't even exist. That's my only ingress and egress to my property. And when you go to the end of the road to put a quote "working stop" sign is ridiculous. Every licensed driver knows you have to go to the end of a driveway or a road and look before proceeding. And when we get snow, that is a huge issue. We can't see. Every street, every side street has that issue. But ours is extremely dangerous because we're right on the curb. And then there's the sunblinding issue, which is in both directions and not just one time during the day. It's many times. And also, there is the traffic issue of the parking, as Suzanne pointed out. That's huge. It's an area of land that does not require it to be squeezed in all the units that Mr. Petrosi wants to. And I think that should be looked at very closely. And also, depending on how many children may or may not be there, that is a huge problem, as well as taking property away from three other houses plus mine. And I don't think anyone would be happy to have, you know, their property made smaller. And especially these lots are long and narrow. And they're very old, yes. But, you know, Walpole is not suffering for housing. There's a lot of housing going on and we don't need to try to put on a little over an acre of land so many units. And I put in my letter, I believe, really just, oh, if the board could do zoning that could allow a one-family home to be there, Mr. Petrosi would walk away from this deal. But I would say that if it has to be no more than two units, and I would put them both to be affordable housing. When I say two units, I mean, it's really one unit, two families, because that amount of land does not warrant stuffing twelve families into. And also, there's the flooding, as I said, the issue that when the snow melts or we have a heavy rainstorm, and I actually have some video that I took during the summer of showing what happens when a heavy rainstorm comes down. My walkway is flooded, the side street is flooded, and it just comes down the street like a river. It, it's really unconscionable what's trying to be done here. And the fact that, like you said, it's the main highway and now with traffic over the last two decades has increased tremendously. It is very dangerous. So, you know, you know, you can sit there and say, oh, we did this traffic assessment, but at what time of day? And, and that's not real life. And I know that they've done, and it's, you know, an average that you take. But when you have to live there, it's different. And no one would want to have to put up with it. It's, it's very, it's difficult. And as far as with emergency vehicles, they seem, we get the, the trash truck comes up, we've got oil trucks that come up, there's no issue. But, you know, when I had called the police one time because it was something on High Plain Street, I needed to call to their attention, and I told them I was on the corner of Doopie and High Plain, they didn't even know where Doopie Street was. So, you know, how comforting is that?
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Do we have anyone else?
Do we have anybody else?
It's like five more, four more people with their hands raised.
I can't hear.
The next person is Mark Rice. Mark, you should be able to give your comment now.
Hi, my name is Mark Rice and I live at sixty-four Summit Avenue. I just wanted to call in and voice opposition to any access to Summit Avenue. I know that was discussed earlier, early on, and I wasn't sure if there was a chance that that might change. But Summit Ave is a very family-friendly street with probably about fifty percent of the occupants have small kids that play outside. So I would just like to, for the record, voice opposition to any cut through to Summit Ave. The other point I wanted to make is the water pressure on Summit Avenue is already very poor. And I, I already heard a comment that there's going to be some kind of connection to water to Summit Ave. So I'm wondering what kind of, what remedies would be available? Because I, I don't imagine that taking water from an already poor water pressure system is going to make it any better.
It's a Rob.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think.
So the next person with their hand up is Kristen Clark. Kristen, if you could unmute yourself and share your comment with the board.
She probably ran off to throw a kid in bed. Oh, there she goes.
Kristen? Okay, I'm going to put Kristen back on mute and maybe she can try later and we'll move on to Katie. I'm sorry, it's E-I-B-Y-E, Abby?
Hello?
Hi, Katie.
How are you? It's Ivy.
Ivy, thank you.
So my husband Chip and I live on Highland. At the end of that walkway that Mr. Truax, Bob, had pointed out that had the berm, currently there's a water issue right now at the end of Summit. That water just pours down that pathway and it leaves large debris and rocks in front of our house. So based upon the plan, those two end units at the end of Summit, what I mean, at the end of Doopie closest to Summit, it sounds like that water, in addition to what Sue Murphy pointed out, snow removal, is going to be dumped at the end of Doopie to Summit, causing more of an impact of which the town engineer, Carl Balloff, is already aware of. And to their point, there is no catch base in resin or any plan in place currently for the issue. So adding these units is of great concern for us because we don't want to see Doopie a through Street either. But we also don't want to see any added issue to our property for the water damage.
Yeah, I'm looking at the plans and I see the contour lines on that. So with the engineer, Mr. Truax, do you want to address that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Well, there, there is a slight area, this back area here. Can I share my screen, Ashley?
Yeah.
So you're talking about this area back in here?
Correct.
So the high point of the site is somewhere between units seven and eight, right through this area right now existing today. So this portion from unit nine and it's going to flow toward the drain is facing through this rail. Then this back corner, units eleven and twelve, and a portion of this end driveway, which flow via whole land down through this wooded area that the town owns towards Summit Ave. which flow via whole land down through this wooded area that the town owns towards Summit Ave. So we have reduced the area that goes in that direction. That's what we had to do in order to minimize any impacts of those folks. I have been out there when it's raining. I know exactly what she's talking about. She's correct. And I believe that's why they put that paved pathway there was to bring the water through. I I I, it acts as a sluice way when it rains. There is, there is no drainage on Summit. I walked all through that area when it was raining. And she's correct. And Carl is aware of it. I've I've talked to Carl about it, the town engineer. Um, we've had these conversations and that was the purpose of the swell behind these units. Try to get as much water away from that end of the site as possible and pull it the other direction. I would like to touch on the other gentleman who spoke real quickly about the water line.
Actually. Turn that. Let's, Rob. Uh, let's first, oh, he's talking. Go ahead, turn him back on.
So we're bringing the water from High Plains Ave. That connection will come out to Summit. There's a very good chance that that will improve the water pressure in that area of Summit Ave. We're going to get that loop out there for them, which will help, help that area and that's the reason to do the water lines. And that's what the town promotes when they can. So I just wanted to touch on that.
Okay, let's, let's take a look. Uh, I am concerned about um, what Mrs. Ivy talked about as far as water flowing off the site. Right now, obviously, water flows off the site in its natural condition or how how it's been in the past. The concern is that if a lot of snow is being deposited at the end of Dupie Street as we heard it, that's where it's going to, it's being proposed to be put. When that melts, it is going to flow onto the uh, town of Walpole property, over onto Summit, and then right down through that uh, sluice way, as you called it, going down to Highland, uh, Highland Street. So what can um, what can you do to prevent uh, an increase in water flow off the site? Which is what would be happening if uh, if that that was designed as you've shown?
I'm I'll, I'll have to look into that and see what I can come up with for you. I'll I'll take a look at the snow removal or so and any impacts that that's going to have in that area.
Good.
Good, good.
Okay, Ashley.
Shall we continue?
Yep.
Okay, um, up next is Jonathan Falls. I'd like to say Jonathan, you're on the air. Jonathan?
This is tough for the public, I'll tell you, huh?
Ashley, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are you there? Oh, okay, you're good. We can hear you.
Very quiet. All right, sorry about that. Uh, so my name is John Falls. I'm a resident of Summit Ave along with Mark. Um, I have a few things that I guess uh, have already been pointed out, but I might as well point them out again. So I'm glad to hear the connection uh, to Summit Ave is not in the current project. One thing to note about the traffic study though, uh, it really only talks the number of cars going in and out. It's not about how hard it is to get onto twenty-seven. So on Summit Ave, we do have a lot of residents that even though they live close to uh, twenty-seven on some, on Civil or Merrick, they actually come down Summit Ave during peak hours so they can get to Old Post Road where the light is, traffic light. So that is something to keep in mind. It's not as easy as uh, it sounds with those thirteen cars. Regarding parking, uh, we are fearful of guest parking. Uh, we, do you already see people on Merrick and uh, Civil use our street to park their guest cars? And that is just something we have in mind uh, with Dupie Street, uh, since it isn't wide enough for parking. Will those residents end up parking on Summit Ave and walking through the uh, pathway? Uh, another big thing that I I know is been mentioned many times with water pressure. Um, our upstairs showers do not get enough water pressure. And I uh, work for utility. Looping only works so well. Uh, so that is something we definitely want to study on and uh, to see the actual outcome. And then the last thing I'll say is regarding aesthetics. So this really doesn't fit with all the single family homes in the area. Uh, so I would just really wonder what they're going to do for the houses along Civil, uh, because there really isn't any area to the left of their uh, street between Civil and uh, all those houses. So aesthetically, are they going to put any sort of visual barrier between those backyards of Civil to their street?
It's supposed to look like their neighborhood. That's a good question.
Thousand nine hundred forty B. Look at.
That's it.
Look at the next one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley?
Ashley.
So up next is um, Julie Southern.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Um, yeah, so I just have a couple of points to make um, specific to what Sue had mentioned. So um, the fact that there's no guest parking, um, I think most of us know that even if you have a family, um, you're oftentimes using your garage as storage as well. So while those homes might all have two cars, they might be using their garage as storage. And so where do they park the other car, even if it's not even a guest or a guest parking? Um, so what's really going to prevent them from parking on the street and potentially not allowing emergency vehicles to get through? Um, also Sue had mentioned kids walking to school. So most of the kids that go that go to Old Post Road that are on um, our side of the street, so I'm on Victoria Circle, they go through Hummingbird and there's a cut through that goes to Pontiac. So they are crossing twenty-seven to get to Hummingbird and taking that cut through. Um, the other thing I'll mention too on the snow removal, so where Walpole hides, we do get more snow than the rest of Walpole. So that should be something that's considered. Um, and you know, further to that, so if the snow banks are on the side of the road, I think someone mentioned that someone could just step off the side of the road if there was a car coming. What about children, uh, wheelchairs? Is that being taken into consideration? Um, also a question that I have um, for for Bill is was it, was the traffic assessment done pre or post COVID? Because I think that makes a huge difference as to the number of cars that are currently traveling down twenty-seven. A lot of people uh, during this time have not been going to the office.
What was the traffic study?
Um, and then al- also to echo what Jonathan Falls had mentioned about the plans for privacy for waters. I'm on twenty-four Victoria Circle, it is right in my backyard. The plan is to rip all of the trees out of my backyard and I'll be looking into their backyard.
This is February twenty nineteen, but then I was updated June seventh, this year.
Um, so that, so that, you know, we we uh, maintain some privacy.
Okay, thank you for your comments on that. Uh, one thing, I did look at that as far as a uh, a vegetated buffer to protect the neighbors on Victoria Circle. Um, that's something that the zoning board would normally require the applicant to plant uh, trees to uh, to block uh, the site. Because as you said, uh, right now you might be looking out at trees, um, and those are, every one of them is going to come down if the applicant builds this as proposed. So that is a condition the zoning board would put in.
Okay, uh, up next is uh, Tim Nail. Tim?
Uh, Samino, uh, so, well, when you heard.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, that was my fault. I'm sorry. Sorry, Tim.
Poor Tim.
Tim?
Unmute.
Here we now.
Yep.
Sorry, I I cut you off.
All right, so basically uh, everything I'm going to say is basic, as Ben said, I uh, I grew up here. I then bought my parents' home, so I've been here for almost forty years. Um, Summit Ave, Dupie, Merrick, all these roads around here, Civil. Water pressure is a major issue and no matter what has been done and all the new houses that have been put in and neighborhoods that have been built and anything that's been said to us, water pressure is worse and worse. You can't run up their shower. You can't, you can't, you literally can't turn your washing machine on at the same time somebody's running the shower. There's no water pressure at all. Flooding is a huge issue. I live at the peak of Summit Ave and my basement still floods. No matter what we do, it still floods. I can only imagine what the people at the bottom of these streets are dealing with. And I don't know if people have talked about this a lot, but there's a, there's a huge power issue here. Um, I've gone and talked to the town on quite a few occasions and we lose power, I think more than anybody you could possibly ever imagine. We come home with our clocks off. I think it was two years ago when it was reported that we lost power twenty-plus times in one year. And these are issues that have never changed since I was a kid, all the way up until now. Um, so I just think when I hear things like this is going to help or this is going to do this, it's just kind of, it's just kind of empty and we've heard this stuff before. And and I'll echo Mark and I'm concerned about the safety. This, when I was a kid growing up here, this was a very elderly neighborhood. Now it is all little kids. Um, it's it's crazy how many little kids are here. It's great, but um, we're also concerned about safety. And then I throw in the traffic study things. I think I read it was done before coronavirus and I don't know if that's true or not. If you can address that, of the traffic getting out on twenty-seven is crazy. Nobody even tries to get out there. Everybody comes down Summit or or goes down Old Post to take that subway, so take a right because you can't get out Civil. Can't get out Merrick. You can't even get out any of those streets. You don't feel like wasting time trying to get out. Because that road is so good. Um, thank you for your time. I hope you guys really do, really, really look into some of the issues that we've had, have been having. Because this was a quiet uh, wooded neighborhood at one point and this basically the area that you guys are going to build on is kind of all that's left there. It's everything else we've been built on. So um, thanks for your time.
Okay, and we have a Kieran. Martine? Kieran, are you there? Okay, um, we'll go to Tyler H. Tyler H, can you unmute yourself and give your comment?
Hi, can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Great. Um, thank you guys for listening to, to our comments as well. Um, I want to echo a lot of what other people said. I think Victoria Circle, there's quite a few housing there um, that are very concerned about what's going on. I think first and foremost, we're definitely huge proponents of understanding what level of privacy we can maintain as part of Victoria Circle, knowing that there are twelve units going into our backyard. Um, and then as part of that as well, we want to address that there's definitely concerns on Victoria Circle to make sure that the water runoff in our backyard isn't impacted. I know right now even when it gets a little bit rainy, the backyard gets really muddy, gets really wet. Um, I know there was proponents about like a swell, which is under, like, we just want to know more of how that would impact our land because there is a lot of concern about how our land will continue to get worse conditions with potentially this development going in. Um, another thing we want to talk about quickly. Um, I know that we did a traffic uh, assessment and we talked about how many cars going in and out. I think that's brought up a few times. About that seeming low, if it's before or after COVID and how that has impacted, potentially what the numbers are looking at. Um, regardless, I do want to point out and a few people have said this as well. It's not just the number. My husband and I moved into the house with our little daughter, thinking that we would be able to walk to the, uh, walk to Old Post, walk to the streets, walk to school. And then now we're concerned about the number of developments going into just an acre of land. And I think that's something that doesn't, it's, the numbers just don't make sense for us and how that will impact the neighborhood. It feels like they're trying to take advantage of Walpole instead of really understanding how it would benefit the the area for us. Um, so definitely want to speak up in general about Victoria Secret feeling really concerned about the number of housing that they're going to push in and how it will impact young kids and young families that are trying to make a home in Walpole.
Okay, thank you.
And then, um, uh, the only person left is um, Kieran. I'm not sure how to say that. I'm not sure if they can hear us. Can you unmute yourself?
Hello, yeah, it's Kieran.
Oh, good. Hi, sorry, I I didn't know how to say your name.
Kieran, yeah, no problem, no problem. Thanks a lot for the the opportunity to to speak. So I'm um, I'm a resident as well of Victoria Circle. And neighbors of Tyler and and Jim, who just spoke there, and also Julie who spoke before. And and again, you know, just to echo a lot of the comments and concerns that have been ma- made. My three are about, my main three are essentially on the parking, as if Victoria Circle being so close to Dupie Street is inevitably going to be used as an overflow parking lot for for uh, any guests that arrive there. Um, and to take that, there won't be guests, is is just crazy. Uh, the other big one I do have is flooding concerns. Um, so last year we already had a flood in two of the basements on our side of Victoria Circle, which was to this property. I was glad to hear at one stage of the grass whale that runs behind the back of the properties and that puts our properties. And John, thanks for confirming about the requirement to have the trees that that would be built there for privacy. Looking at the plans, the thirty-foot gap between the back of the developments, the property line, which don't include the actual deck that comes off the back, I'm not too sure how practical that actually is going to be. If there's going to be trees and a four-foot wide grass whale in there. And even if that is practical, you know, obviously as a, as a resident abutting with this, I have privacy concerns. But I would also have privacy concerns for anyone that buys these properties, for any of the ones to go out the back. They're essentially going to be looking right into a grass whale and a row of trees and and that's it. So even in terms of recreational space for young kids, for their own families, it's something I think hasn't really been accounted for in 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 this, in this plan at all.
That's a point.
That is the opportunity to speak on.
Okay, thank you, and good points on that. Ashley?
We have Lisa Nelson. Lisa, if you could unmute yourself.
Hey, this is Dwayne Nelson again. Uh, the question that, and I live on Civil. Um, there's always been this rumor that um, Civil was a, a private road and then sometime in the, in the seventies, the people uh, that lived here uh, basically paid for the road to be paved. I'm wondering if anybody can answer, uh, and also, I guess to put it in town water. I wonder if anybody can answer uh, the question in re- in regards to Dupie Street, uh, whether that's some kind of a private road that um, I guess I'll say the people that live on Civil Street uh, may have um, some ownership to.
I can't answer. The applicant couldn't answer.
That's a really good question. You're you're saying because they have frontage on Dupie Street, um, you know, what is their access to uh, Dupie Street? I don't know. That is a, um, that's a question that you could uh, probably have to address on your own. But uh, I under- I understand your question. I don't have the answer.
Okay, yeah, am I still on? Ashley, am I still able to talk?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So um, I guess, I guess I'm not sure why it would swing to me. Uh, I think it's something that the town should, before they allow uh, something like this uh, to to potentially happen, is is that uh, there should be some clarification of what is, you know, what are the rules associated with this? And um, I mean, I certainly could find a lawyer. There's, there's a million of them. Um, so uh, with that said, but uh, uh, it just seems that this is going through with uh, without uh, us really knowing what the rules are for for people on on Civil.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like we, one last person. Let's try Kristen Clark.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Oh, good. Yep.
All right, sorry about that earlier. Um, I just want to reiterate some of the concerns that have been voiced. I live at uh, fifty-five Highland Street, um, on the other side of that paved path. And flooding is a huge concern. As Katie Ivy brought up earlier, the water just pours down that path. The basement's flood. This area is also ledge, so there's not a whole lot of um, leeway in the ground. So basement's flood, power goes out. Um, so that's a huge concern. And it'd really be nice to see something put into the plan to divert water from going down, uh, so that it doesn't go down Summit. And in the winter, um, the path is just a huge pile of snow. You can't get past it. So if the snow is just pushed towards the end of Dupie, that's just going to make the whole matter worse, um, on Summit when everything melts. It's just going to add to the water. And also, as was already voiced, the um, water pressure in the area um, is not great. So those are my two main concerns, uh, but the flooding in the area being by far my highest concern. Thank you.
All right, Karen Lee. I see no other hands raised um, on the attendance list and no one has submitted any names in the chat.
Okay, want to address the, uh, issue of traffic and I think Suzanne has a, uh, a comment on that.
I do. I do have a comment on traffic. I feel, um, we definitely need a peer review on this. We have two schools on either side of this project and we just heard many abutters state that it is an issue. And I feel we need a, a review of this study that Mr. Scully did.
Okay, and that's one of the things that the zoning board can require as far as, uh, peer review, uh, on things that relate to traffic. And I know that in our rules, we talk about projects, uh, less than, than 20. But in this one, the extenuating circumstances are, as just Suzanne just outlined, the, uh, the schools and the fact that this street empties out to one of the busiest streets in town, which is High Plain or also known as Route 27. So, uh, I think it does make sense to have a, um, a peer review done of this. I even have questions, uh, as far as the, uh, the sightline distances and just think that those, uh, those should be, uh, re- reviewed. So, uh, yes, I, I definitely think that is appropriate. So, now what do we ask?
Do I need a motion for that, Ashley? Is that how that works? Oh, I'm muted. Do I need a motion for that? Anybody? Ashley?
Can you say?
We also have Judy Barrett here, if you have any questions for her. I forgot to mention she huffed in.
So Ashley is called Scully. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I think Town Engineer has reviewed, uh, all the information that we provided in terms of sight distance analysis, trip generation and all that. And I, I don't believe he, uh, had any other comments. I mean, with the regulations that you have, 12 units, we projected out as if they were large single family homes and they're not. So probably it's even less traffic than what we projected. At this point, I don't know what else, uh, would be done. Traffic peer review, he's gonna look at our trip generation calculations and concur based on ITE and that they were.
Do you have his comments? Cause he says, wrote in Carl's column.
Um, and the issue of COVID, pre-COVID, uh, you know, we're, we're not doing levels of service analysis at Old Post Road and High Plain Street, for example. So we're not out there counting traffic, although the, the levels of volume have started to come back anyways. But we, we know what, um,
What that study was done.
Speeds are out there. It was posted speed. We've done it at 35 miles an hour out there. And, uh, and we meet and exceed distances that would reflect 40 to 45 miles probably.
So we'd want the peer review to just confirm for the board.
Actually, yeah, Mr. Petrosi, I have the letter from Kyle Baldoff, Town Engineer, right in front of me. And it says, "The Assistant Engineer and I have reviewed the planned submission only." The exception being binder in section eight. Uh, so it is a, uh, the, we just heard that the Town Engineer reviewed this and didn't have a problem. Well, it was a very limited review. So, uh, that is something that we need to, uh, to take at. The value from the Town Engineer saying, uh, "All they reviewed was the planned submission only." That's right out of the letter. So I think a traffic review is necessary.
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, I have no objections to having a peer review of the traffic. Seems to be a pretty big concern to everybody. So, um, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, I have no objections to paying for the peer reviewer to look at the traffic, uh, in that area. We want it to be a safe way and a safe development for everybody. So I'm more than happy to provide the funds to, uh, to conduct that peer review.
Ask what the cost is.
And I, and I would also say that, uh, from a, from a peer review standpoint, it would be my preference that the peer reviewer review the drainage, cause that seems to be another concern. Um, before we get to any other of the related potential items to review. But I think drainage and traffic seem to be the biggest, uh, issues.
Is this loop?
And of course, we can look into that wa- we can look into the water pressure issue as well.
The Nelson's brought up a great point.
Okay. Then Suzanne, do you wanna make a motion on that?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion for peer review. I, I, I think they would be separate reviews though. One is drainage, one is traffic. For two separate re- peer reviews, one for drainage and one for traffic?
Yeah, so I think, um, with, with these projects, a lot of times you wanna identify the, the thing that might have the biggest impact on site and, and where the things are. Um, so if we start with drainage and then kind of see what that does, then we can do the traffic. I, I think having an explorer of operations makes sense.
Yeah, it's, it's got very bad drainage up there. So it's a good idea to definitely check into that.
Oh, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I think I've provided the funds for the, uh, peer reviewer to review the drainage and the technical aspects of the, uh, plan related to construction of the roadway and the drainage. And I'd be happy to provide the funds, uh, for the, uh, review of the traffic. I think, uh, was in the same proposal from, uh, Tetra Tech. Is that right, Ashley?
Yeah, so we're, Tetra Tech does, he was on earlier tonight. He does all of the things and so it makes review a lot more streamlined. Um, well, the board, my sanity and, uh, the applicant, nice one, one shot for that.
Great.
So if, if you, uh, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'd be more than happy to do that. And, uh, how, how long do you think it would take for them to, uh, do the peer review, Ashley?
So what I'll do when we receive the funds for that, I'll put together a schedule and kind of outline, um, an order of operations. And I'll touch base with the peer reviewers and ask them how long it'll take them. And then, um, we'll kind of pencil out a schedule and a timeline for the review of the project.
So do we wanna continue this meeting to, uh, I don't know, October sometime or?
Hi Judy, your camera just popped up.
Hi Judy.
So what I might suggest is since we've continued, uh, Summer Street to October 5th, um, maybe we can also schedule this one as well and then I'll be able to update the board with where we're at and I'll be able to kind of provide a timeline if.
Yeah, that's fine. And, and what about, uh, would it be permitted, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, our engineer, uh, communicated with the peer reviewer?
Yeah, the, they can communicate as far as providing documents, but I don't want it to be plans being revised until the zoning board hears the peer review.
And then my, my only ask is that I be included on all email correspondence.
Okay, Suzanne, could I have a, a motion to, um, request the peer review for the items outlined?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Suzanne. Could I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Drew Delaney. Okay, this is a roll call vote for, um, the peer review. Starting, um, with the remote learner out there, uh, Jane Coffey.
Aye.
Drew Delaney.
Aye.
Suzanne Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
John Lee, aye. Okay, so, uh, we've got the peer review done. The next thing we'll do is, uh, continue this until October 5th. And like the other, um, pro- uh, project that we had tonight, this will be an opportunity for public comment. Uh, we're gonna, you know, continue moving forward on, on, um, some things. But really this, the October 5th meeting is to get public comments on, uh, the project after people have times, time to look at the plans and, um, you know, participate in this, in this session. We had some comments tonight and I appreciate that. But, um, the goal of the October 5th meeting is, um, is, uh, public input on that. Okay. He's not on this case. So, okay. Uh, Ashley, what else do you have?
It's about my bedtime. Um, so I, I think we're good. I think we covered a lot of ground. Uh, tonight we got a lot done, which is not easy to do on virtual hearings for sure. Um, it takes a little bit longer to do everything. Uh, we did have one member of the public here who is using town resources to access the meeting. So again, if there's anyone that needs that technical support, I'd encourage them to reach out. Um, we have everything available on the town website. Um, reach out to us if you don't have access to that yet. We try to get things up there as quickly as possible. And both myself and Amy, um, try to make ourselves as, as available as possible to folks with questions. So, um, yeah, otherwise I think, I think, uh, I think we did a good job tonight.
Okay, we're not done.
We're not done?
No. What we need to do is we need to, uh, have a roll call vote to continue this hearing until October 5th, seven o'clock, um, on Zoom. So if I could. Moved by Suzanne.
Second.
Second by Drew Delaney. Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Jane Coffey.
Come on, Jane.
Aye.
Okay, aye for Jane Coffey. Uh, Drew Delaney.
Aye.
Suzanne Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Dave Anderson.
Aye.
And I'm John Lee, aye. So this hearing is continued until October 5th, seven o'clock on Zoom. And now finally I just need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Suzanne.
Second.
Second by Drew Delaney. Any further discussion? Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Going around, um, Jane Coffey. Okay, aye by Jane Coffey. Drew Delaney.
Aye.
Suzanne Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Dave Anderson.
Aye.
And I'm John Lee, aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you.